Anybody here that has been tonight that has not signed the documents that we'd like to give? What's I call it, need to or not sign the list, we will not provide. Everybody here. Here and none of them. I like to call on me to on. Thank everybody for coming today. Good evening. Just as soon as.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. I'd like to call on this now to best and give us our safety instructions for tonight.
Good evening. To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, please exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two doors to your right, and then proceed to the nearest stairwell, directions to which are indicated by the exit signs. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Granville Street, which is the street that runs beside our building, to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance as needed. In the case of a tornado warning, please exit this room as in the hallway where we will all remain until it is safe to exit. And in the event of an active shooter in the building, if there is an accessible escape path, please run and try to evacuate the premises. If you can't evacuate, find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found and lock any doors that you can. And as a last resort, and only if you're likely in imminent danger, please fight. Our staff will provide additional assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. Uh, Mr. Harris. Practice.
Dear heavenly Father, we are here thanking for our day of light. Well, thank you for those who have been watching. While we ask you to continue to give us the mind and heart to do those right of our citizens and their children, this we ask your son's name.
Amen.
Session two just came in. Is there any intention to speak on the public hearing?
Um, yeah, I'll say something.
If anyone comes, please come, sir.
Hmm?
Of course, stand and pick up. Please come, sir.
That's basically public position.
Public position to the opinion to services. Ladies and gentlemen, at our last meeting, we feel that vacancy of when he went out as commissioner, at this time, we would have a foreign in. We'll say only we put the commissioner of District Seven. So, would you please come out? Right of turn.
You have anyone you want to stand with?
Yeah.
So.
Can you go with that?
Yeah.
I'm going to go, sir.
First, I say. Thank you all for allowing me to be here and waiting for the board. Thank you. I.
Larry, you went for the.
Restlessly.
Restlessly.
And sincerely swear.
And sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I'll support.
The Constitution and law.
The Constitution and law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
Bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional.
And to the constitutional.
Powers and authorities.
Powers and authorities.
Which are or may be.
Which are or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
That I will.
That I will.
Endeavor to support.
Endeavor to support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of state and state.
And laws of state and state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
And that I will.
That I will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
Of Edgecombe County.
Of Edgecombe County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And pray so next.
These folks have done, uh, going to have a brief recess if anybody would like to come to congratulate the commissioner. Everybody, you come on, speak, come on. And also, there were a few people came in late. As before, we said, when we started the meeting, we're going to have a talk. A few of you came in late. Any of you would like to sign up to speak? Please come to the third and sign and attend to speak at the public hearing while we're in recess. We're being ready to recess on about five minutes after we sit.
The one that.
Hey, 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 let them.
I love, hey, can you?
Absolutely.
All right, here?
Sorry, you don't leave it up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
See, I.
So I know first hand.
He just posted.
Little bit. How's it there?
I'll call. I'll leave back to Ari. And I'll say I missed the devotion. You have the, uh, Minister of our previous meeting, uh, in your package, uh.
And the October 2nd, that special meeting, those ministers are at your seat as well, and they were sent to you in advance.
And since, uh, Mr. Woodland was not here that time, I'll take a motion from anybody but. This second place. All their favor, let me go by vote, say aye. All opposed. Here and none. Then it's approved. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to, uh, call the public hearing to order to discuss, um, unified development orders, text amendment twenty-five to our UDO. Our public hearing is called to order. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. Public ministers here are giving a public hearing will be held by Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, November 3rd, 2025. At six o'clock noon, the Jonathan Feltz Commission from Second Forward County Administrative Building, 201 St. Andrew Street, Auburn, North Carolina, to amend the unified development ordinance. Proposed text amendment would have data center and crypto mining operation and related terms and standards for the applicable sections of the Edgecombe County Unified Development Order, UDO. Copies of proposed amendments are available for public inspections during business hours, eight AM to five PM, in the county planning office from 2:05, County Administration Building, 201 St. Andrew Street, Auburn, North Carolina. All parties interested, all interested residents are driving hours, if they don't make their use of it. This the 23rd day of October, 2025, all were the board commissioners, county face and corporate board.
Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call for Mr. Durbin Sphell, who is our planning director. He will review with you the proposed amendments to the unified, our unified development ordinance. Will also outline, uh, changes that were made in such a recent conversation. Under your instructions, also give use of alternative procedures.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, African in Edgecombe County, and the African is requesting a UDO test amendment to add crypto mining operation and data center use and associated language to the unified development ordinance. Crypto mining operation, if it be permitted, uh, through the conditional rezoning process in the general industrial M2 district, and allow as a planned development as well. The data center use is to be permitted by right in the general industrial district, M2 district, and allowed also, um, as a planned development. And as you see in the map, these are the areas in the county that are currently zone M2, uh, general industrial district. Um, so per the meeting, um, we had a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so staff did go and change, um, the timing of the neighborhood meeting, which is now proposed to occur after the application is submitted, and no later than ten days prior to the planning board meeting. Minimum setback, uh, is to be one hundred feet unless the project shares a lot line with a residential zone property that has an existing or approved dwelling unit in which the setback will increase to five hundred feet. The type C buffer will be required, as well as additional landscaping may be required to help a project meet, uh, the minimum sound level prior to. Um, there are no height restrictions in the general industrial M2 district. However, height restrictions could be proposed as a condition for projects that have to go to the conditional zoning or plan development process. As for maximum noise level, in the draft they have for you, um, you have sixty DPA during the hours of seven AM, six PM, and fifty DPA during the night. And as you see, sixty, uh, that's about the insane, uh, level as having normal conversation or hearing background usually at a store or restaurant. So, data centers and crypto mining operations also must submit, um, attestation of electrical and water capacity from public utility providers when obtaining initial building permit approval, as well as part of the annual zoning compliance permit. Um, if the board commissioners were to adopt this language tonight, uh, we have one, uh, minor change, and that is session four point three point thirty point I. Um, as you see in the highlighted area, it apparently reads in cases where a data center or crypto mining operation utilizes electricity from a public electricity service provider, the following standard shall apply. Um, staff, uh, ask you again if you adopt this language to change that to in cases where a data center or crypto mining operation utilizes electricity in any amount from a public electricity, public electricity service provider included for uses and/or activities incidental to the data center itself, following standards shall apply. Own site generators shall be fully enclosed, meet relevant fire standards, and shall receive all required state and federal permits. And then there are, um, some staff recommended considerations that, uh, Mr. Evans will discuss.
Thank you, Durbin. Um, and certainly if you all have any questions about what he's covered so far, you're welcome to ask those now. I wanted to bring a few other things, um, to your attention. As you know, we're looking at this text amendment in our unified development ordinance, um, that would, just as a recap, that would add data centers and data mining as a permitted use with, with these development standards that we're outlining in our M2 zones. Right now, the only two areas currently zoned M2 in the county is Kingsborough Business Park and another parcel north of, uh, Kingsborough. One of the things that we've talked about, um, right much, and it's been a concern, certainly a valid concern from everyone, um, are the noise limits. What, what kind of sound will this create? Will that give? Would that, uh, become what some may consider noise pollution? So, we've done a lot of discussion we've had with this board, planning board, we've done a lot of studying, um, uh, from staff and our broader team. One of the things we want to point out is that, as we mentioned before, our UDO does address sound or noise limits in other areas. So, Durbin will show you. Um, here are some other sections in our current ordinance that addresses, uh, a sound limit or sound maximum. For example, in these uses that include agricultural storage and processing, gasoline, government operations, I won't read that entire list. Our ordinance currently says that those sounds cannot exceed seventy decibels and can be located no closer than one hundred feet to the nearest residence. The next slide will show you, um, other areas where it also includes, uh, a now, a, a noise or a sound limit of seventy decibels, no closer than a one hundred feet in all of these uses. The, uh, the exception would be here for salvage and junk yards. They can be no closer than four hundred feet from the nearest. feet from the nearest residence. The next slide goes on, another area where a sound limit is addressed in our current ordinance is with wind energy conversion. In that case, the noise level is not to exceed 55 decibels. The next slide shows here, this is a map that Mike Matthews went out and did some, went out to do some samples of what the current noise limits are. I'm going to ask Mike, he's the most familiar with this map here, for him to describe to you and to the audience what this map here represents.
So what you're looking at is, what I did was, I took a noise level reading device, which actually I'm using my phone, there's an app on your phone, I downloaded it, but I have compared it to actual high-dollar devices, and they were fairly similar, maybe a couple tenths of a point or something like that, but it's in the same magnitude. So when we're talking about decibels and we're talking about noise in general, there's a difference in a noise that, just like me standing here talking, at some point in time, I'm going to shut up and I'm going to sit down. But as long as I'm talking, the decibel is going to be higher. If none of us breathe right now, you can hear the air running. That is a constant noise. As long as that air is on, that is going to be a constant noise, that is a 24-hour-a-day noise. There is a distinction between if you're standing out here on Kingsburg Bridge and you're listening to traffic goodbye. As long as you got, if you go out there at 7 o'clock in the morning, or 5:30, 5 o'clock, 5:30 in the afternoon, the noise is going to be increased because people are traveling to and from work. If you go out there at 9 o'clock at night, when the traffic is less, the noise is lower. So the numbers that you see up here, I took anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes at each site. Obviously, that's not a 24-hour period, these are averages that I received over that 15 to 20-minute period. So obviously, they can differ depending on how long you're there. If you're looking at the, right in the middle of, if you're going to see 63.3, that is actually at our water storage tank that is located right beside Camden, or about railroad tracks as well. The average reading I got there over a 15 to 20-minute period was about a 63.3. If you go a little bit north of 64, between 64 and 64 alternate, the average there was about 66.1. If you go down to Corning, the average was about 59.9. I did see those levels about 63 to 64, so I know it dropped down to the mid to low 50s. Also turned around and went down to the Antioch Road to the closest home that I could find that was as near what I call our industrial park as possible. Those readings were around about a 52.3. Now, the distinction between those two is if I'm standing at the water tower, I have no buffer between a lot of our sites. If I'm on Antioch Road, I have a buffer of trees, and that is the only buffer I have. If I go down to Powell Road, I actually stood on the railroad tracks where it's an open line of sight all the way down the railroad tracks too, where K-Man or QVC would be. I took those readings for about a 15 to 20-minute period, come out to be about a 53.1. Now, that also includes, you know, you've got a large buffer of trees that are there. So that is the information I tried to gather at Kingsburg as to where we are currently with what we have that is there now. I will remind you that I took these readings somewhere in about the mid-afternoon. I wanted to try, I went back out actually a couple nights ago, around about 8:30, 9:00 o'clock at night, and took a reading, and the readings were still, I would say somewhere around about 62, 61, somewhere around our water tower, but it was about 8:30, 9:00 o'clock at night. These readings were taken in the mid-afternoon. So obviously, they're going to be a little bit higher than they are later.
Thank you. Mike, any questions? So we wanted to share that with you because we certainly understand that as we have the opportunity to put provisions in this text amendment, if you all adopt it, that we can put some guardrails around the impacts beyond, you know, the facility to the neighboring residents and folks that might be near it. And so I think that's a good idea for us to do that, we want to be mindful of that. We wanted to share this with you because I think that to some degree will be difficult for us considering the noise limits that you have already out there, or what you would experience out there. As Mike said, now, these, the noise that you will hear, the levels that they will be on there, they fluctuate depending on if there's a truck coming by, the time of the day, wind blowing, and all of those things. I think it might be somewhat challenging for us to be able to try to regulate below these limits when we see that there's something on a baseline above it already. And so certainly would invite you to hear from the public tonight. I would like to go ahead and show you some other things that you, maybe some alternatives for you to consider. As it stands right now, what has gone before the planning board at their last meeting is the noise levels or the sound levels to be at 60 during the day and 50 at night, regardless if there's a residential structure.
But that change was made at the lab, that's all too.
Got you. And so what could be an alternative would be to increase those from 60 to 70 during the day and 50 to 55 at night is an alternative, if you want to consider other alternatives. Another alternative would be adding back the language from previous draft that addresses projects that not border a lot within an existing or approved residential dwelling unit to have a noise limit measured at the property line of 70. Again, where we had before, if there's no dwelling or planned dwelling next to it, that the limit could be, the maximum limit could be 70 decibels. A third alternative could be adding language in there, as you see there highlighted in red, where there are some acknowledgement of existing ambient sound levels there, where existing ambient sound levels could be determined by a third-party professional who's certified to do that, and that you put in place language that says that they shall not increase the existing ambient sound levels, or these limits, whichever is great. So those are alternatives for you to consider, once you hear from the public tonight and make a decision as to if you're going to move forward with the text amendment and how you want to do that. I believe that's the last. Any questions? Or staff?
So we'll call you back. This time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call for comments. Malapurt, would you please call the first person, second one?
Mr. C.D. Dockers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm C.D. Dockers, 4460 Bedrock Road, Rocky Mountain. And I thank you and the Board of Commissioners and the county staff and the Attorney General Kirk for this time, to give you a little history about Kingsburg Industrial Park. And quick comparison, property tax revenues from properties, I gave you a list, it's property that's been involved in development the last 34 years that you can see. It's created, plus those is on record to be developed, like 200 lots here in town, I'm sure we drive. We're driving it to about $1 million a year in annual revenues. One dinosaur, $25 million outstanding. In the 90s, I served as Vice Chairman of the Hitchcock County Commissioners, and we voted to place a zone overlay over the area which is involved into the Kingsburg Industrial Park. We have had many companies show interest in our industrial park. They have bashed more and received some incentives from companies like Corning, and of course a lot, but money was spent on others and incentives offered out of, caused by politics, money, management, not enough power. This was a big, in the local electric grid system, I think we'll ask somebody to talk about that tonight. There's nothing there. It's a corner, we're still, we planned it back in the 90s and we ended 20s in 2026, yeah, that's what you're about, and we still look. So as part owner of the energy storage solution, which is a development company, battery storage sites and data sites with energy production, I asked you to support this project and take your link in the chain. The chain has started way back then, we recognized we needed a big industrial park. And this, the spin-off from an industrial park can make a positive influence on our economy, such as lead the county budget. I think this past year then has the privilege of the, in the valuation increase, that might have been relatively difficult. But had excess funds to develop local more incentives and financial support for much-needed educational facilities and teacher retention, and funds to expand our insurance programs online, and funds to bring the animal shelter online. You know, this is a street talk, but I get this problem of staffing that kind of, so just staffed. I'm going to ask you some questions, you'll have to answer. How many of you worked in tobacco, peanuts, or corn or cotton back in the younger days? How many of you do a name? How many of you have an iPad, cell phone, computer, or some electronic device that has information available with us? The future is more information, which requires more energy production and more dinosaurs. The development team has asked for no incentives, a lot of those companies got to have this privilege, it's got to be a tier sum to get this and this, we've asked for nothing. Plus, we're going, we've agreed to purchase the land from the county that has been already, some of it's already been advertised. Also, we have agreed to provide funding to upgrade our local natural gas. In the end, we will get what we need, and there will be more surplus in the system than there is a present. We currently work with Mr. Evans to provide the county with financial contracts and construction contracts, or operational contracts that bonded to secure the county's community financial liability. This is a really big, investors are calling us daily, they want to be here, and they have the engineering, the construction team, and the money to do this project. Thank you for your time and for your continued service to the people of Hitchcock County. Together, we can make this project a model for growth, energy innovation, and opportunities for others in years to come.
Good evening, and I want to thank you for your time and your effort and consideration. I'm Dan Schaefer, President of Energy Storage Solutions. We are primarily an energy company. We specialize in energy storage, and we're adding energy generation along with the data centers. We primarily consider ourselves an energy company, but we're going to be funded by data. Now, what we're proposing to do here in Hitchcock County is to solve the energy issue. We will, our target is to generate 900 megawatts AC of energy. Along with that, we will be coupling it with a 3,600-megawatt energy storage system. And of course, the data center that will be developed with it will pay for the entire system. We will be generating twice as much power as the data center will require. We will require some redundancy to support the data center, but we'll have in excess of 200 to 300 megawatts of generated power that could be deployed upon the grid in Hitchcock County, City of Rocky Mount, Barrow, the surrounding area. We think that, you know, it's going to give the county the opportunity to bring in more manufacturing, more industry, more business, all the things that county very badly needs, and we want to participate in making it possible. And the key issue is energy, energy, and energy. I want to thank everybody for the effort and all the cooperation we've received from the county. I know this is a new endeavor for everyone, and we anticipate a lot of questions and a lot of answers. And as we go forward, I think that we'll be able to resolve any issues as to the proposals on the noise level. I think that, in my opinion, the only one that will actually work for us is the third If you go out on where the property line will be up against Highway 64, we can't do anything about the noise that's going to be created along 64 today, and it's going to get a little noisy area as things continue to grow and expand. But if we're required to not increase the noise levels, I think you'll find that the top of our acoustic walls will be more noise on the highway by far than what's going to be generated within the data center operation. But it would be somewhat difficult to determine what noise is on this side of the wall and not noises on that side of the wall. So if we bring in professional consultants to do a survey with graphs and sound levels for a week or two, so that we'll know what the noise levels are 24 hours a day, and what it is that we can't, any levels that we can't increase the noise level on, that should be very remarkable. Thank you.
Mr. Bob Pike?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Wiggins. I'm Bob Pike, 386 Northwest Main Street, Rocky Mountain. I'm the President and CEO of Carolina's Gateway Partnership, mainly tasked with economic development for Hitchcock County and Rocky Mountain, Alabama. My main goal and all goal of our organization is to bring tax revenue and jobs to Hitchcock County. And as firm believers, we all know, in this day and time, power is the key to economic growth. We've started hearing of this data center craze for the last several years, but especially because of our location, it's been a high level of interest for our region, as well as our particular areas of our industrial development in our community, because of the assets that we have, available power today, as well as water availability, advocate natural gas, in particular also our speed of our internet in this location as throughout the county, always made very desirable for the data center of industry to locate facilities in our region. As we've talked about several times, we do not want to give up power that we have because into one particular project, but we want to have multiple projects to bring multiple jobs. And one of the things that's come about in this particular project that we're talking about, started off as data center conversations, but it's evolved over time into power generation as the first and foremost opportunity I see in terms of economic development. And we talked about economic development more in the future, attracting companies, but also economic development is also for existing industries. It's one thing that as our organization has been working on is helping our existing industries here in our county, in our municipalities. And because of that, the future of power availability is so, so critical. And we have to have that assurance for existing companies wanting to maintain operations. If there's a concern about losing power, roundouts, or interruptions of any kind, people get concerned, not to mention our residential community that rely on power and everything we do in life. And then also future opportunities. A lot of the time and treasure that the county has invested into Kingsburg industrial parks, I'm a mega site in the state, we've just actually been in the process of expanding that park through some additional options. So we're setting the stage to be, you have set the stage to be the premier industrial site in the state of North Carolina. With that, we have to show and demonstrate to new projects we have power. And that's whether it's a manufacturing facility for chips, electronic And that's whether it's a manufacturing facility for chips, electronic chips, cleanery technology, pharmaceuticals, solar panel manufacturers, whatever industry advanced manufacturing requires. So the fact that this potential project has got power generation and able to plan to produce excess power is highly critical for the future of this county and its economic viability. Fortunately, it has a data center tied to it. Now, I know there's a lot of concerns been expressed and I think a lot of due diligence by county staff was a lot of our staff in the community has been put forward to address a lot of those, those issues. But it's all coming that a data center brings the dollars that will help pay for this extra power generation capability. It's not only the generation, it's also the ability to transmit that power to our region. With that said, I'm not an electrical engineer. I grew up on a farm, spent most of my time in chicken houses. One of the things we've done in this partnership is engaged a third-party consultant that's an electrical engineer. It's probably one of the most experienced individuals that I've been able to work with and come across that understands the entirety of the scope, both on the data center, but more importantly, the power generation side. And at that point that he comes up, I'll introduce him, but I don't know if it's how the roster goes now. If you want to go ahead and introduce it. Yeah, I'd like to introduce Ted McGarvin. He's with MGE Three LSC Consultant, and I'll let him further introduce himself and give you a perspective on this project.
Commissioners can be with you tonight. That's all of these. Yeah, I am a, I'm an electrical engineer. That's, that's kind of my fault. I went to school at NC State and grew up in North Carolina and have a lot of experience. I've actually co-op with electric co-ops in North Carolina, EMC. That would go back to their agency. And I worked in my dad's business for a while until he got sick and got pushed out. So I started my own. And my client base essentially was, and by the way, I'm licensed as a professional engineer in North Carolina. I have a number of things. I haven't been since I did, uh, been a lot of expert witnesses work, a lot of design work. My chief, uh, client base was, I also did work with Duke Energy on part of a siding business. We all worked with Duke. I worked a lot after he's in North Carolina. Obviously, if you go to NC State University, you're going to know a lot about East Carolina. So I learned a lot about that. But just let me kind of give you the, I also have a lot of data center experience. I'm working right now with a group up in West Virginia that we're developing the largest data complex we've built right now. Still build a, we're in the process of building a three and a half gigawatt power plant. We have special offers places in the state to do this. We're a long way down the road to get that done. We're very quiet about it. The other thing I want to say about these data center projects is you get guys out there that make these big announcements and then nothing comes through. I don't think a lot of that is because they don't really assess the landscape too, what else to go on, like power perspective and things like that. For instance, we've already got an operating there. I'd say you look at all these other data centers that you attempted, the first they attempted to breed, that didn't work. And they're going to attempt the, their own power resources and those permits can, you know, tie it up for a while. We kind of figured that out a little bit. So with all that said, I want to talk a little bit about how many data and power run together. Most of the data, we had data center, we talked about just not only keeping data. We had a lot of power issue in fact that really boiled down over the last few, data pretty much lives in, as from Virginia right now. Power crunch is pushing that power to Ashburn. In fact, our project is analogous to this here. It's going to be a low latency, which is the time the fiber takes to transmit data over there to us is just very low. It's several way lower here. So these are, these are really good locations in that respect. In that respect of how this stuff comes on shore, basically around Norfolk and that due to coast of Virginia. And you're, you're one of the guys that can off-take like we are, the guy that I'm working with, can off-take years quite often on a go, not do that. The Florida Northeastern North Carolina did a power crunch and it's been a power crunch for a long time. It's just, this is not new in our area here. Right now, we can talk about national energy policy all night, but we've made some decisions that maybe weren't that great. It would cause the entire nation to get a power crunch. Duke is looking at upgrading last, but that's, that's a four, five-year project. And that's quite not going to help with Eastern North Carolina a lot. Same for Dominion. We're just a long way from anything here. We're just out here in the Eastern North Carolina, Northeastern North Carolina in particular. We're at the end of the PJM RTO. We're at the end of the Dominion region. We're at the end of Duke reach out here. So I gotta tell you, that way we're going to do something out here. We're going to do it for ourselves, don't go back. So what we're looking at, and we've talked to the Deepmont Gas guys and they're part of Duke Energy. And they're ready to commit to doing about twenty-seven mile line to bolster what we already have out here. I think we've got enough gas capacity now, but we can't have enough gas capacity. That's, that's the next thing I think we're going to see power generation in the United States. We're about to enter the natural gas gap. Probably hear a lot about nuclear and SMRs and things like that. I'll say right now, that's not fair. It's just, the only reason it isn't is that SMRs take bomb grade fuel to offer. I don't think it's going to be a good idea to have a small bunch of rapids around here that have bomb grade fuel. Unless we want to have higher potato reed on every, uh, on every one. So I just don't see it as practical. Duke doesn't see it as practical, even though they talk about it, but it's not, it's not real. So it really comes down to natural gas. And the natural gas issue is going to be pipelines. We're starved for, we've got a starved pipeline of capacity throughout the state. We're very fortunate. We already have some here and have Deepmont ready to build something out here. So the idea that we would put distributed generation either at a low megawatt level or a high megawatt level makes sense. It's also quite probable that you can work with these guys, these guys who work and I would work with them to come up with an agreement to work with North Carolina EMC and Electric Cities, which are big out here. And they get the power resource over to the co-op and to the, to the city that, so they're, they're really feeling the strain. I'm sure y'all, you're all around Rocky Mount. They're all about the strain of power cost. Well, that's none of these, to the eastern agents. We're going to have to, we're going to feel about again, right now, the cost of power nationwide is going to scatter because we're starting to reset. So we're, we're in a period, we probably haven't seen this need for power in the United States since the end of World War III. That's, that's kind of where we are again. Now, we're in a situation, we're going to do this agreement. I'll say, say, say transmission. When we talk about natural gas pipeline, we got to talk about electric transmission. Now, I took a look at PJM, which is the RTO service area out here. Their regional transmission expansion plan, which I check that thing all the time, has virtually nothing out here because there is nothing out here much to improve. We have some substation and they're rebuilding a couple lines up near Aurora and all that. But that's where there's industry. There's nothing here. And if we're going to do industry here, we're kind of going to have to fend for ourselves. And I think if I'm, if I'm being honest with you guys, which I always would be, is what we're going to see, we're going to have to deal with the politics too with the co-ops and with Electric Cities and maybe with the legislature. And that's why Duke, Duke Energy would actually be a friend of ours here, I believe, because they'll serve this area. Deepmont is a competitor to what Dominion, Dominion has their own gas operations. So we're way better off working with them and having some competition in here than waiting on Dominion. I just don't see Dominion doing anything in here. They did some upgrades, basically maintenance upgrades over the last couple of years in this area. They're, they're finished for a while. It would take them and just to build a new transmission line like they would have to do to go through all the siding and issue with that, you're probably looking at five years, best case, best case to do that. I've been through all that. So we're, we're at a point that we've got to do something with, we've got to do something for ourselves out here. Maybe we should have done it a long time ago, but we didn't. And now here we are. So Ben, I've got, I've got a right question for y'all. This is, this is my area and I'm, I'm prepared to answer questions. If I don't know it, I'll tell you I don't have any questions.
If you don't have any, we'd like you, the rest of anybody to sign up. We'd have a question for you.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you. Good to hear you, Don.
Thank you.
Mr. Sam Russell.
Good evening. Appreciate y'all's time to come out tonight. My name is Sam Russell. I'm an insurance and bonds broker. I work for a company called Oland. The largest privately held broker in the U.S. Currently do about one hundred and three billion dollars of construction insurance a year specific to data center projects. With over a hundred and seventy-five data center projects we've insured and bonded in the past eighteen months. I went to University of South Carolina, studied risk management and finance, and have been in the insurance industry, both underwriting and on the brokerage side for ten years. Major my conversation tonight is to talk about surety bonds as it relates to these large projects. Assured bond is a third-party guarantee of a contract between two different parties. In this case, one of the parties is the developer, other party is the municipality. A lot of the, you know, regulations that we're reading through and discussing tonight will be ultimately put into the contract between these two parties. What we'd like to offer and what the developers offering as well is to bond these contracts so that there's a third party holding both parties responsible for some of the representations made at the beginning of the project. That way, at completion, where they change, you know that there's a objective third party, which is a large and complicated insurance company. Believe me, they don't have any feelings. They read the contracts and they implement the law. We talked to the developer about a few different types of bonds that we may recommend in this case. Completion bonds, which is a, applies this to the municipality, provided by the developer to local government. Completion bonds guarantee that horizontal infrastructure, roads, utilities, and drainage are built according to approved permits and plans. They serve as financial assurance that public improvements be completed even if the developer defaults. This helps municipalities mitigate risk and enforce development standards. Another type of bond that we may talk about here is a license permit bond. The developer provides this bond to the municipality as well. Permit bonds ensure that developer complies with the terms and conditions of issued permits. They also cover any fines or penalties resulting from violations, offering a layer of accountability. These bonds are often required before work begins and help maintain regulatory compliance throughout the project lifestyle. And the last kind of bond from they consider is a decommissioning bond. This is a developer bond provided to the municipality. Decommissioning bonds ensure that developer will properly dismantle and restore the site at the end of its operational life. This is particularly important for projects with environmental or community impact as it prevents abandoned infrastructure and any costly remediation. The purpose of these bonds is to ensure that the balance sheets of Hitchcock County and the developer are protected for any representations and operations agreements issued to the developer for the completion of their project. Any questions? Let me know. Take it for your time.
Thank you. If I have some questions, okay.
Mr. James Wren.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is James Wren, seven oh four NC nine seven east in Vegas. Coming for you tonight. I'm not an expert on data centers. I know it's a, it's, it's, uh, it's been seen as a threat, environmental threat in communities like, it's voted down in Pitt County, Apex. I listened to the presentation of Ms. Wilson for the Tarboro Town Council, which showed, which said this technology had been unproven, or where a site like this is in North Carolina. I appreciate the effort to address these issues in the, in the limits. Clearly, the alternatives are worse than, than the, the first line of defense you'd have there. What we've heard tonight is some new information about power generation, but I don't know, we have to absorb a lot of this information to be able to speak to it. I just know here in Hitchcock County, I know all we look, we're looking for money, we're looking for income. We know the experience would happen in the nineties with the, trying to bring IBP Starboard House to Kingsburg. The beauty, right together and stop, it'd be a lot better off today in Hitchcock County, but we don't have a hog slaughterhouse in Kingsburg. We had QVC, they had boring, these are kind of positive industries that we, we want. Data centers are a big question mark. We've heard a lot of things, new information tonight that we have to absorb, but I just, I don't know who else in the community is here to speak, but the community of Kingsburg and Hitchcock County need to be protected from environment, industry that has environmental consequences to this county. And so it needs to be, be thought out and all this information needs to be absorbed and critiqued. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we are not, we are considering tonight a text to our ordinance so that we can do our data centers. We are not here tonight to approve a data center. But if we do approve it, that means that a data center could go there. But our interest is in there. Mr. Peters. Young man, we just spoke. Are you sure? In terms of, is there anything that we could do if we approve this? To make sure that that was a part of consideration?
You mean some specific terms?
The bond and all of those things that you spoke to. If we were to support this amendment to our text amendment, could we do that tonight?
As you know, Mr. Chairman, those, those bond requirements are not included in those text amendment language.
Neither are they considered in our UDO.
Right. Yes, sir, for this use.
For this use.
So, you know, any proposed data, if this language has been considered, is approved, then there would be no way to require those additional bonds.
That it's for him to use as it could. If there was a proposed data center in property that was going to require additional, then that a condition for one of those bonds could be required if the applicant.
But I'm sitting here based on this greatest thing, thinking that, and, and, and my other comments would be, but I think I think it's for myself in terms of, of, I think, I, I'm, it's my intent to support it. And because I think we have done all of the due diligence that we can do as a board to ensure to protect the public interest and environmental issues of the Kingsburg site. And back and forth, we require our staff, we require other resources to get us there. It's our intent regardless of what we put out there, make sure that that site is protected. But I do think we also need to, we should not depend on our ordinance should be able. If we pass this, we will not be able to add those requirements.
You would not be able to require those. You need to, you know, there may be, as we've seen with solar farm applicants, those applicants are often willing to offer additional conditions that are not required. You could not require those bonds.
If I could add, Mr. Chairman, another area of control, if you will, that the board have on that matter would not be just. on that matter would not be just what you adopt here for the text amendment. It could also be at the sale of county-owned property. You could choose that you want to make that condition, sell a property owned by, I think that's.
In other con, in other questions.
As a part of that, any land that's not zoned M two now. Most land, except for one parcel really, is M two, is owned by an accountant. So we have that control there. Um, the other piece of that, if they were going through additional rezoning, we could add that as a condition of that additional rezoning if the developer agreed.
Okay, okay. Because this is something, sir, I think that should be required. Uh, before we pay, before, I'm, I'm comfortable with the fact that it's all, okay? Uh, is there any other questions or anything from the, uh, comments?
Can I ask one more thing of staff or just, um, just for the public? I know we've read at Kingsburg, but could we just elaborate on some of the other projects that we've gone and seen and put eyes on to kind of see what? I think the big question that we've been asked a lot of is where is this being done elsewhere in the country? Uh, we've actually had staff go.
Sure. And I'll, as, uh, I'll ask Mike to come back to the podium and he's got a few slides. He'll share. And while he's on his way, I'll say to your point, what we've seen across the nation, we'll call it the initial wave of data centers, and data centers have been around for a long time. Most of those that are existing now have essentially, you can call them, essentially have plugged into the grid, right? Where there's available electric capacity available, like was mentioned earlier, Northern Virginia's, more data centers there than anyone else, anywhere else in the world currently, there was electricity available that plugged into the grid. Most of those opportunities have gone away. Now there is very limited electric capacity available to the tune that these data centers need. And so now the second wave is, as was mentioned before, of, uh, figuring out how do they generate their own power. Because that second wave is relatively new, can't just ride around anywhere. You can ride around in North Carolina and find data centers, but you can't ride around and find one where there's a data center and they are creating their own power by burning natural gas. And so Mike is going to show you, um, an instance where there is natural gas being used to generate electricity, not for a data center. And then also for an actual data center that has power generation on site, uh, in Memphis, Tennessee, we have the opportunity to do.
Charlie and Jason, you can fill up that presentation.
I think that there would be also added, uh, that with more data structure, we would we want to add to the, uh, at the end of business, uh, consideration of this to our conversation. Very nice. That would be actually. Great job.
Thanks, sir. Um, so approximately, uh, I think it was on maybe like Friday, October seventeenth or something. Uh, I made contact with, uh, North Carolina State University. I was told that they had power generation on site and, uh, I talked to the young lady, she had, uh, set up a, a, a tour of their facilities. They actually have two different facilities and obviously these pictures are probably a little tough to see from, from the audience. But the, uh, the first picture on the left is basically just their, their board where they monitor everything. The second picture, uh, they actually have two facilities, uh, on campus. And both these facilities are located, uh, directly on campus and, and they're within earshot of, uh, dorms and/or classrooms. The middle picture actually shows two turbines that produce power. Uh, obviously some of their power comes from the grid, some of they produce their own power by way of gas. Uh, one, the turbine on the left was, was not functioning while I was there, while I was there. The one on the right was. And it was actually running when I took this picture. Uh, I'm not going to say it sounds like what it sounds with the air conditioner running right now. But there is a little bit of a noise to it, but not much more than what you just heard. Uh, the one on the right is, is, I just took that as a, uh, it's a single turbine that is, it wasn't awful while I was there. They were doing nicely. Just to kind of show you the set, uh, the size of that turbine. Um, from what I understand of it, the turbines themselves are not very loud. They don't produce much noise at all. It's, it's what they power that produces the noise. Obviously at N C State, because they're powering, uh, they're running chillers, uh, cooling towers, they're running boilers. Um, they're, they're using some water recycling. All of these pumps, all of these mechanisms are going to produce noise, uh, and obviously to produce air conditioning and heat for schools and for campus. Um, next slide, please. Um, so as Mr. Evans said, uh, last Tuesday, uh, Mr. Bob Pike, Evans, uh, Mr. Baldwin, myself took a, a quick day trip, I know it was quick, it was a day trip, uh, to Memphis, Tennessee to visit the, what they call the X A I data center, or I think it refers to it as Colossus One. Uh, it is a, uh, Elon Musk data center. And they actually use, they, they, they do have their, uh, they do have power on site. They, they use power from the grid. They also have power generation by natural gas, uh, which is much larger, I think, than what we'll see around here. Uh, I may be wrong about that, but it, it was quite a, quite a trip and quite a facility. Uh, as you see up here at approximately two hundred foot, now again, this is much like I talked about earlier. Uh, this is not a twenty-four hour, uh, reading that I took. It was, uh, you know, a five to ten, maybe fifteen minute, uh, average that we took from about two hundred foot, the readings were about sixty-eight point seven and about five hundred foot, it was uh, around sixty-six point two. Uh, and I believe at around twenty-five hundred foot, it's somewhere around about fifty-seven to fifty-eight, uh, decibels. And one thing I want to add about this facility, this facility is located, uh, just, just north of what I think is called Decore, uh, Powering Plant. Also, a, uh, intermodal rail system is just south of, of this park. And this is a four-lane road that we were actually standing on. And on this four-lane road, the truck traffic was very heavy. Uh, to the point that it was almost impossible to get a reading without a truck coming by. Uh, the intermodal was just full. They were running containers all day long. Uh, and also just north is a, uh, I think Bobby just described as a power plant.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yeah.
Um, we, we took decimal readings from, again, two hundred foot, five hundred foot. We also actually went up to. We actually went up here. As we got to the north of it, you can actually see this barrier of woods or type of buffer. Uh, once we got on the other side of that buffer, you can still see the facility, uh, kind of the corner of it. But the sound was much less than what it was while we were near it or in front of it, obviously would be, but the tree service, quite a bit of up that we were not anticipating. Uh, and also just some pictures of, of the facility itself. Um, again, I'm not sure exactly what all is encompassed in this. I, 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 we were hoping to have a tour of the facility. Obviously it didn't work out. Uh, we were able to go inside of it and look around. It just didn't work out for us, but I think we were able to get close enough. Then we got to see, well, and taste everything that we thought was, actually. Uh, this, again, it's just, and actually this used to be an old Electrolux building, so as you see here, but they revamped and remodeled. And so as I was talking about, they have grid power, which is this over here, but they also have power generation that is at the backside of. Uh, and again, this is the part of it that we're showing earlier with, that's, that's relates to. So just, those are, I, I think staff, twenty staff, uh, in fact, I believe several commissioners have gone to Zablin's to visit the data center as well. Uh, data centers, there's themselves are not noisy. Uh, they're actually barely quiet. If, if they're pulling power from the grid, if you're standing beside it, you wouldn't even know it was anything but a deal. Uh, it is, when you get into these other things that you start to hear some of the noise. So as far as the data center itself, the, the few that I've visited, I've not heard any noise from them. Again, this could be the power generation, it could be the cooling tower, the chillers, whatever else, recycling, uh, circulation of water. You're going to have some noise that comes off of. Just don't kind of give you three, but they, thanks for that.
Questions from us?
Any other questions? Any other coming to the board? Any comments?
Uh, the lighting requirements that we discussed are previous. They're still in, in this.
Correct. Yes, sir. There.
So just this downlighting with high restrictions.
To, yes, to. That's right. To minimize light pollution surrounding areas, uh, taken from other sections of the U D O.
And these, this, this is what it says, has those, those additional things said to be, that's what guys are paying what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
My only other comment regarding the noise at the sight line, at the lines, is it's not understanding that coastal engineers can engineer these projects to know what's going to emit beyond that barrier based on the knowledge that's there. Um, you got it, this one here. The specific, I think that it's kind of brought this to fruition, has explained that. So I feel like we could put in there in our ordinance to say it needs to be engineered to not exceed sixty dBs at the sight line, no matter what that is outside of the site, but they can engineer their sound barriers to say that it cannot exceed sixty within that. And then if you measures above that, that's ambient noise outside of it, but they, I think we can require that the site is engineered to not exceed that based on the barriers that are there.
So what you, you know, proposing in the text amendment is, would be sound readings at, at the property line as well?
It has to be engineered to not exceed sixty dBs, sixty dBAs.
Or whatever limit.
Or whatever limit we choose. So I mean, yeah, I was just throwing sixty out there, throw, throw a number out there, but I think, I think you say, I think you say, because if you say fifty at night, they're going to have to engineer fifty because it doesn't work. You're going to have to change your, change your whole operation, basically. So I think we need to find a number that we're comfortable with. Um, and if Kingsburg site's already reading sixty-six, we tell them to engineer it sixty, they shouldn't be adding any more dBAs to, you know, they can't, there's not meeting more sound that's already being produced from the highway that's there.
Also, uh, one other point I want to note is that whatever the maximum limit that you all put on tonight, if we pass this, um, there's provision in the recommended text amendment that says that that reading is to be taken by a third-party independent, paid for by the client, but selected by the county, similar to what we do for store or management practices. Um, so not just the word of the developer or their engineers, but a third party would have to verify whatever those terms are.
I fear with the third option, why I'm saying, I think we should say, let, let's have the site specific to data centers engineer to, to a standard. Um, and I think the key word there is engineer to the standard, build to the standard is the standard for other industries, industrial, that that land is already zoned industrial is seventy dBA. So if we put a factory across the street and they are allowed to emit seventy dBA, the data center is then, it's effect to allowed to emit seventy dBA. Because the new sound readings are going to say, well, now the street is saying seventy dBA per, I mean, maybe. So it, it, it can only increase what the data center can emit. So I think this allows us to limit what data centers are. That's a concern that we've heard from every single citizen pretty much of that supposing this, this sound. Um, I, I think that's at least kind of where I'm coming from on that, on that, if that's, if that makes sense.
I believe that we can sit here all night. We could try to mitigate sound. We've got an industrial bar there. It's going to emit sound. And when it comes to what's in and out and what might be the, the, the highway or what's up being emitted, we're going to have noise at Kingsburg. We have developed a site for industrial growth that's going to create some noise. And I believe that we have that our due diligence that there will be buffers, and we will try and buffers. And even with what is there and what is still we did not choose for some of this sound is coming. I believe there has been recommended by the planning board. It's reasonable if that's his time. We can respect ourselves and believe we have nothing in Kingsburg. And I'm there to make a motion that the application is consistent with the doctrine of the guidance of U D O tax amendment, five, that's twenty-five. There's no kind of, what are the conditions completely that your application is consistent? Edgecombe County Department of Health and Health. And this is presented to the Department of Competency Plan based on the following reasons. What is consistent, they can now develop that policy. And one, that can now develop the rules. But any motion just for that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to clarify what the final language is going to be.
I think the board's recommendation was it.
I'm more confident.
Could I get, um, our I T staff to bring up the, the previous, um, slide there?
Sixteen. It was sixteen.
And Durbin, if you don't mind, come back up and let's walk through it.
Sixteen, fifteen at night.
So starting from the, the first slide. So I believe we go to the slide that talks about neighborhood meeting requirements. I want to make sure. Okay. So I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. That second bullet point there, this was based on conversations you all had at your, at your last meeting. Yes, sir. That, um, there would be a neighborhood meeting requirement if it is not currently zoned. If they're going to ask a piece of property to be rezoned as M two, that's been consistent through the, the various, uh, versions of this. But the last change that you all asked to be made, um, is that, uh, the neighborhood meeting be conducted after the application is submitted and no later than ten days prior to the planning board meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So that language would be in there. Um, next slide, setback and buffers that I believe has changed. Uh, next slide, height requirements, nothing regarding that, uh, has changed. The next slide, uh, maximum noise levels. Um, right now we're, you know, the, the published, uh, text amendment, uh, is, says that it's sixty during the day, hours of seven A M. to six P M. and fifty at night. We've talked about some other changes to that.
This is what came, this is what you said I talked about, right? But we, this is what we sent back, what, what we sent back. The, this is what we did out of the back, right?
Well, what you sent back, and Durbin, you correct me, what you sent back to the planning board was that, you know, initially it said that if there's no dwelling next door, an approved dwelling, residential dwelling, um, that, uh, it did not have to go down to.
Well, but what we sent back to the planning board was for the lighting standards. And so this change was made out of the last, the call to.
Gotcha. So we need to determine, is this going to be your noise limit here?
Uh, suggestion that it can be changed.
In the consideration, yes. So we'll put a question mark on that right now. Um, if you go to the next slide, that was just illustrating about sound. The next slide, uh, utility, uh, usage. Um, the only change would be on the next slide. We're recommending, because of your conversation at your last meeting, um, we're recommending that the language say in cases where the data center or crypto mining operation utilizes electricity in any amount, before we talk about if they're generating their own power, they essentially didn't have to get that attestation. But if they're using in any amount from a public electric service provider, including uh, for uses and or activities incidental to the data center itself, but following standard shell plot. So even if they're not using the power to generate their data center, but they need that power for redundancy to for other, whatever it might be, that they will still have to get that attestation. It sounds like everybody is good to include that. It sounds like everybody is good to include that. The next one, utility usage, uh, that has been consistent. And then, uh, then we get to the staff recommendations, and we'll show those again. We showed you all of the other areas in the current U D O where it talks about a uh, noise limit, that being seventy decibels in those, for those, uh, uses, no more than hundred feet.
They're already in.
That's already in, yes, sir. So, you know, a- as it stands right now, if somebody.
Yeah, not for our consideration.
No, sir, just showing you as a comparison to other areas of the, yes, sir. Um, go to the next slide, and this is, uh, wind energy conversion, currently in the ordinance, but that maximum limit is fifty-five decibels.
Those are things that don't matter. You know, for, anything, plus, what did you on similar? What, what was the present? The thing, Ruby, you know, the, the, what did you do? Okay.
Yes, sir, I think you should stay in there for context.
And so, uh, then if you go to the next slide, uh, this is the map you've seen already, the next slide is showing these alternative considerations. Alternative consideration be to, uh, to take that limit from sixty to seventy during the day, and from fifty to fifty-five at night, is an option. The next one is uh, adding back the language from the previous draft that addressed projects that not order a lot within existing or approved residential dwelling unit to have a noise limit measured a proper line of seventy decibels. As we stand right now, and you've, the latest discussion you had was that there'd be no difference, that it'd be sixty day and fifty at night, unless you make these other changes. And the third option, uh, would be adding that language there, where you would consider what existing sound levels are, and that a new project coming in would not exceed established existing levels. So that seems to be, this, it seems like you agree to all of the other changes. The, the last point here is to decide at what, what noise levels that you want put in this ordinance, if you have.
I don't think that fifty can work at night. I'm looking at seventy, seventy. And I think it's appropriate, if we say resident, I mean, there's a five hundred foot barrier, if we say residence is, is, is a different, if you're adjacent to a resident, of residence, then. I think that's appropriate. Another tiny question.
Please.
I'm gonna accept the text as presented, and put three alternative solutions to you.
I think it has to be one, it's one order.
I think my notion would be that we approve the text amendment as presented with all their changes, and that property be engineered to not exceed sixty DBA as property, no matter, right, no matter which. Day, day or night. Day or night. Whether there's a residential dwelling next. Cause you have a five, residential dwelling, you already have five hundred foot barrier, but, but beyond that as well, so you're moving from a hundred to five hundred. And then it can't, engineer to exceed sixty, right, at the property.
Mr. Spon, the information, application, please.
It's the county's application, or?
We, 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 the county have made an application, yes, Hawk, on the change, so re, re, uh, the state.
The Eschborn County Board of Commissioners concludes that the application as presented is consistent with Eschborn County's adopted policy guidelines as expressed in the twenty-fourteen Converance of Plan based on the following reasons, it was consistent with economic development policy number one, economic development goals. Application is reasonable, the application, Eschborn County Board of Commissioners concludes that the application as presented is reasonable and is in public interest, is in the public interest of the following reasons, enhance economic growth potential of Eschborn County with a sixty DBA engineered sound barrier at property line. Second.
The motion of the second. Please. Do you have what we stated?
Yes, sir.
You got it, I hope?
Yes, sir.
You got it, understand that?
Yes, sir.
All that paper ready to number, do I say, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, and aye, and aye. Something that's. At the top, I like all the, want, Mr. To press the.
Okay, okay.
Probably hearing number two. Is considered changes to the animal services by, broken hand, what's called, to order. Mr. Peter, would you please take that?
Yes, sir.
Good evening again, James Renn, 704 NC 970 East Leggett. I'm also the Vice President of Phoenix Historic Society, African American District, Edgecombe County, and we're thankful for all your support. I want to announce to you that this coming Saturday, November 8th, at 11 o'clock here in the Carman Auditorium in this building, we'll have our annual educational program. Topic is the Patillo Legacy in North Carolina, dealing with four generations of Walker Patillos, including two who served as principal in the school here in Tarver, Patillo School. And our speaker will be Dr. Omar Ali of UNC Greensboro, Professor of African American Studies at UNC Greensboro, and we'd like y'all to come out and learn about the Patillows, four generations of Walker Patillos.
I would suggest that we provide a thank to each other's education. Okay, there I'm supposed to say, "Anybody can go." That's the brother. I would suggest.
Mr. Roy Heikle?
I'm going to reserve for when my agenda comes up, Professor.
But no objection. We're calling it for me, okay? Okay. Why not?
I just need some clarity.
Did I sign up?
Yeah, I did.
You signed up, I'm sorry.
Okay. When it came up, nah, I just need some clarity. So from here on, we gonna start signing up for the upcoming?
We've already been signing up for the last, uh, few months.
Well, I did sign up last month.
I had.
We talked about it, but I didn't know, is it in the minutes?
Yeah.
Everything, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't, I didn't do that. Because I talked about it last time I was up here.
We, we, we sign up, I get everybody an opportunity before we open our, we sign up, uh, like, signs.
So it'll be outside the door from here?
It's outside.
That's all, okay. I've been seeing that myself, because it's probably here, it's going to be down.
Oh, it's, it's, well, it's all public.
Okay.
Just started there.
Okay.
And reasonable there. We need to know what's going on, sit before you come. We can understand if people sit out there and stick, we out, stay all night. Okay, hear all the things that people saying, they keep on it up, okay? But let's just kind of put some water to it, okay?
It's not all the other means are in the waste, so that's fine. I want to be clear.
Anybody else? Can a non move on to a further day? Let's admit this, Professor. You have, at this time, how you want, you can listen.
You have in your agenda packet includes the two budget amendments, the first two that require your approval. The first one is upgrading funds received from insurance claim and health department. The second one is removing some funds between budget lines. This is for Braswell Memorial Library in Rock Mountain. As you know, we share in operational costs for that library with City of Rock Mountain in Nash County. And now that we're catching up to what their, the final budget approvals for Rock Mountain and Nash County, and based on the formula, there's an additional $7,916 is the county share. And so, no, no additional funding out of fund balance, moving that out of another line. Those, the two, happy to answer any questions that you might have on those or any others, but I recommend that you approve budget amendments, one and two.
Motion. Motion. Second.
Yes.
Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and none, it is approved.
Next you have before you, consideration of resolution for Operation Green Light in support of veterans. I'd like to invite Ms. Sharon Johnson, our Veteran Services Director, to the podium, who will present this resolution to.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the Edgecombe County Resolution for Operation Green Light in support of veterans. Whereas the residents of Edgecombe County have great respect, admiration, and utmost gratitude of all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who serve in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas Edgecombe County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the price for high-priced freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas veterans continue to serve our community in American legions, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and functioners ask county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal disability compensation benefits throughout the year. Whereas approximately 200,000 veterans, service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service member will transition to civilian life in the near future. Whereas studies indicate that 42 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. Whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all parishes and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, it be resolved, the Destination at Spring Light for Veterans, Veterans County, the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners hereby declares November 4th through the 11th, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice by many women who were transitioning from active service. It yet further resolved that the service of Operation Green Light, and Green Light will be his failure, the Edgecombe County Administrative Building, for the entire month of November in honor of veterans of Edgecombe County and nationwide. And it be further resolved that the service of Operation Green Light, Edgecombe County, encourages citizens' patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made a miserable sacrifice to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in the window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th, 2025, this third day of November, 2025. Signed. Wish the week is full, Chair.
Motion.
There's more room to choose.
Question? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none, it is approved.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to recognize Ms. Johnson's not only a veteran, service director, but she herself is a veteran, does a fantastic job in that role. Also, would invite you commissioners to join us. We're having a luncheon on the 10th, Monday, the 10th, for our veterans, staff members who are veterans, at 12:00 PM in the Carman Auditorium, and welcome to join. Next you have on your agenda, approval of projects for school capital reserve fund. As you are aware, a portion of the county's sales tax revenue specifically under Articles 40 and 42 is designated for school capital purposes. After the annual school debt service obligations and recurring capital outlays are funded, any remaining balance is transferred to our school capital fund. Per the understanding between the Board of Commissioners and Edgecombe County Board of Education, proposed uses of these funds are to be submitted to the Board, Board Commissioners, for review and approval prior to expenditure. Dr. Andrew Bryan, the Superintendent of School System, has submitted the attached list of proposed capital projects for our consideration. I recommend that you approve the proposed list of school capital projects as presented.
Second question? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And none, it is approved.
Item B on your agenda is regarding a request to waive our tipping fees. As you'll recall, the Board approved an amendment to the county's solid waste management ordinance to establish waivers for solid waste tipping fees. The intent of the amendment was to promote community welfare and environmental responsibility while maintaining accountability for illegal dump. Under the new ordinance, solid waste tipping fees may be waived in specific cases, including work performed by qualified nonprofit organizations that benefit the community, cleanup efforts related to disaster recovery, county sponsored projects or events, and cleanup of illegal dumping sites provided the applicant has not been identified as a responsible party in the illegal dumping activity. The county received a request from the developers of a property located at 3,003 North Main Street, formerly owned by the county. The developers report that since acquiring the property, they discovered that illegal dumping had occurred on the site prior to their ownership. The debris includes general solid waste and construction materials that were not placed there by the new owners. Therefore, they requested the Board waive tipping fees associated with the cleanup and proper disposal of the waste. The request includes documentation and photographs verifying the illegal dumping activity and confirmation that materials were present before the property's purchase. Staff visited the site, and we agree that this debris would have been dumped long before its sale to the property. I recommend that you approve the waiver of tipping fees for any of the cleanup for the illegal dumping at 3,003 North Main Street that can be accepted at our C and D landfill. And as you've noticed, we have Mr. Roy Heikle, who's current owner of the property here tonight, if you have questions.
You can speak if you want, but I believe it's approved.
I would like to watch for your podium.
Thanks. Same. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Normally, God imagine, Professor, if you speak, we got too many questions for you. Next.
I will note, the Board would be interested that they are moving forward the project. We're happy about that, they're doing it in phases. Part of it includes applying for registering to the buildings on the site on the National Historic Registry, which would open them up to some historic tax credits. They have submitted plans to the town of Tarver for Phase 1, which will be what was the main health department building. I think those plans are close to being approved.
Yes, sir.
And they've already done some asbestos mitigation work and other pre-development work out there, so I think we'll be seeing things move out there.
If you want to give an additional update, you can.
I still might have to say that.
I'm sorry.
Roy Heikle, thank you very much for the invite this evening. We are making very good progress. Our plans, the site plans and building plans are under the control of right now. Catherine Gray, her department, are reviewing them. I really hope by the end of November, we will have a permit issued for Building 1 of the four buildings. We've already gotten the asbestos removed, so demolition after that, and then the renovation process will begin. We hope that by May, June, July of next year, we'll have 17 units available in Building 1, and we'll be starting to make them available to those residents of the county in town that wish to live there. So we're very excited, and thank you very much for the waiting.
Well, we've got, let's talk about this, Charles, that, 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 I hope.
Yes, and thank you.
So far.
So far.
You know, come as a question. Thank you so much. Moving on, Miss Erin.
Next you have in your agenda packet regarding, the program is called the C-PACE Program. I'd like to invite Ms. Natalie Best to the podium, and she's going to give you an overview of what that is and what we're asking for of you tonight.
Good evening. C-PACE stands for Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy, and is a financing tool that allows owners of commercial properties to finance energy efficiency, renewable energy, and resiliency upgrades by making special long-term assessments that are repaid alongside of property taxes. The use of a C-PACE Program creates an additional financing mechanism for property owners to use private funds to finance improvements to their eligible property, therefore driving economic development by creating a diversity of jobs in the resilience and clean energy sectors of the economy. The assessment requires minimal upfront costs and provides a more accessible financial mechanism to fund improvements that will increase the tax value of the affected properties at minimal administrative cost of local governments. C-PACE improvements allow property owners to save on their utility bills because the improvement brings to energy or utility savings and will result in improved indoor air quality or increased resilience, which will increase the ability of the communities and local governments to respond to natural disasters and improve public health. Program allows owners of qualifying commercial property to obtain long-term financing from private capital providers for certain qualifying improvements of 35% of the value of the property. The qualifying improvements include energy efficiency, renewable energy, resiliency, and water conservation, as well as improvements made to address safe drinking water. Similar programs are active in over 36 states and have attracted more than $7 billion in private investment for thousands of properties. Counties and cities in North Carolina may participate in a statewide C-PACE program to support commercial, industrial, agricultural, and multifamily property owners with access to financing for efficient and resilient building improvements. Joining the statewide program does not expose the local government to any financial or legal liability. Private capital providers and the statewide administrator, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, will assist interested commercial owners to apply for C-PACE funding. Local governments that join the program will be reimbursed for actual and reasonable costs associated with executing documents related to the assessments. And to cover these costs, EDP and C will collect a $500 administration fee for approved projects at the time of closing. Except for executing documents necessary for financing, there is no other administrative involvement by local governments. To make the program available in Edgecombe County, the Burton Board must first adopt a resolution indicating our intent to participate. Then we will hold a public hearing to offer the opportunity to make it known about our intent to participate. Following that public hearing and final resolution, participate will be presented for your consideration. Therefore, I recommend that you adopt the included resolution of intent to participate in the C-PACE Program and to call for a public hearing to be held as of December 1st, 2025.
You have motion for adopt the resolution. Submit. Okay. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Is this the first time this has come before us, because I don't recall this.
It is.
I'm going to show you this.
So, there, in the press. Do you have a question? Ooh. All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, there's a motion to call for a public hearing. Submit. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And none, so call. Will this help you? Will the program help you?
I'm interested.
See who you told.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next.
Next is a resolution regarding support of a statewide flash flood action committee. In August of this year, two individuals tragically lost their lives in the town of Spring hood located in Nash County after being caught in their vehicle during a flash flood. This devastating event prompted the Nash County Board of Commissioners to pass a resolution calling for the creation of a statewide flash flood action committee. Following that action, Chairman Wiggins was invited to meet with officials from Nash County to discuss their resolution and its purpose. The goal of the committee would be to strengthen coordination between local, state, and federal partners to improve data sharing, early warning systems, drainage infrastructure, and public education related to flash flooding events. Given Edgecombe County's own history of recurring flooding events, particularly in low-lying areas along the Tar River, our creeks, and other tributaries, Chairman Wiggins believes, and I agree, that our formal support of this statewide initiative should be given. I recommend that you approve the resolution of support for the statewide flash flood action committee as presented.
Motion. Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution is approved. Thanks, Miss Erin.
You have bad debt write-off presented to you from the Health Department per our policy. This is debt that's been uncollected over a period of time. If the client does present back at the Health Department, the account will become active again. Otherwise, we recommend that for the periods, the two periods shown to you, this total of $1,069.69 debt fee written off for the health.
Motion. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye. If none, it is approved. Thanks.
You also have before you a recommendation for fee changes, in particular, two vaccination fees for the Health Department. One is for hepatitis B vaccine, one is for meningitis. You'll see it was recommending increasing, based on the increased cost of the vaccine itself. For the healthy vaccine is going from $79 to $82, and for the others going from $219 to $240. These recommended changes have been recommended by vote of our Human Services Board of Commissioners.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none, it is approved. Next, Miss Erin.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the board considering adopting a resolution to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month. I would like to have the honor of reading this resolution as I could, representing the eight tribes here in North Carolina, including my tribe, which is the Hallowasapponee Tribe in Hollis. I'd like to read the resolution if I could. Proposed for you tonight is a resolution that states, whereas Edgecombe County, the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the rich and diverse cultural heritage that has significantly shaped our county, and whereas North Carolina is home to one of the largest Native American populations in the United States, with historical roots stretching back thousands of years, and boasts the highest Native American population east of the Mississippi River. And whereas Edgecombe County has deep connections to Native American history, once being home to several indigenous tribes, particularly to the Tuscaloosa Nation, whose presence remains an integral part of our shared heritage. And whereas the Native Americans, whereas Native Americans have made and continue to make meaningful contributions to the social, economic, cultural, and political life of our county, state, and nation. And whereas the month of November has been nationally designated as Native American Heritage Month, providing an opportunity to recognize, honor, and celebrate the rich cultural traditions, contributions, and history of Native American peoples. And whereas it is vital to foster awareness, appreciation, and understanding of the unique heritage, traditions, and ongoing challenges faced by Native Americans across the United States and indigenous people globally. Now therefore, be resolved that the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners officially recognizes the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in Edgecombe County, North Carolina, and encourages all residents to join in celebrating and learning more about the invaluable contributions of Native American communities to our society. I'd like to add a footnote, if I could, that I am one of two county managers across the state of Native American Heritage, and proud to represent.
Okay, I'm going to let you make the motion, which is, I would you make the motion?
Motion to.
Thank you.
Questions? All in favor, let me know my votes, aye. All opposed? Here are none, it is approved. Next.
Thank you to the board. Next you have consideration of approval of outside agency discretionary funding. In this current fiscal year, $200,000 was included in the consideration of funding to outside agencies with projects and programs that align with our Getting Off the List Initiative. A request for proposals was published, and we received 24 applications for a total request of $519,710. I convened a committee of five team members, and we reviewed the applications. The committee ranked these applications based on alignment with the Getting Off the List focus areas, viability and readiness, cost effectiveness and return on investment, sustainability, community support, and partnerships. Based on the collective ranking of the committee, attached are the list of 10 projects recommended for discretionary funding. I will note that those 10 organizations are the Boys and Girls Club, Down East Partnership for Children, United Community Ministries, the Strategic Twin Counties Education Partnership, also known as STEP, Turning Point Workforce Development Board, United Way Tar River Region, Rural Opportunity Institute, Tri-County Industries Field Family Farm Education Center, and Carolina's Family Medical Center. I will note that, as you see there on your sheet, they are ranked in order of the points that they receive. Carolina Family Medical Center requested a total of $25,000. But based on funding available, recommending that they receive $5,000. I will verify with them that they will still be able to do some of the activities that they propose in what they submitted, but my recommendation is that you approve as presented.
Would you want to make a motion to excuse?
Yes, yes, sir.
As you, Thomas. Mr. Williams.
I believe we have, those are the two board members. If you serve on any of these boards that are recommended for funding.
It's on the bottom.
They have parties.
Neither, neither is not here.
With the need.
They are not one of them.
Neither is not.
I mean, they, Carolina County.
You want that comment?
No, no, no. They're part of you. It doesn't count. Okay, that's fine.
Like, is it, is it motion to excuse?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have a business relationship with several of these nonprofits by the nature of my job, so probably best to excuse. Yeah, I have a business relationship with several of these nonprofits by the nature of my job, so probably best to excuse.
No move, but please, okay, okay. Is that, is that motion to excuse with this person, this person? And Mr. Williams. Second, I second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, high.
Um.
Your excuse? There's a motion to approve those that are recommended. Chair makes the motion.
Standing your.
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, high. Raise your hands, please. All in favor. Hope you do have four, that is true. Okay.
Four, thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, you, you mentioned earlier adding an agenda item.
Yes, that's right, okay. We added an agenda, consideration of additional compensation for our compensation plan. Sheriff has requested conversation, please.
Good evening. On behalf of the Sheriff, Axton, that's not present because he's at the Sheriff's Association. I'm Chief Deputy Williams with the Edchcombe County Sheriff Office. I just want to thank y'all for letting me speak this afternoon. Uh, as you know, Ms. Linda Powell is about to retire. Her last day is actually December 10th. Uh, none of you are busy, um, Thursday, on the 6th. She has a walkthrough, um, at our sheriff office if you have time, from 12 to 2. But her last day will be, uh, November the 10th. We set out knowing that this is coming, so we set out to, uh, find her replacement. Well, it's kind of hard to replace Ms. Linda when she owned many hats. She was also not only our financial person, she was our IT person too. So we're gonna miss her a lot. Uh, we did try to prepare for this, uh, with the help of Ms. Linda Barfield, knowing that, uh, this financial person is gonna work close hand with her and her staff. We, uh, put this out to the public and to everyone on September 9th, with the deadline of September 26th. We had 17 total applications. After the backgrounds was done, that we, after the backgrounds were done, there were six interviews done by the board. There was a board held, um, excluding the sheriff and anyone else, with Ms. Barfield, myself, Megan Muse, and our auxiliary deputy, Steve Warsworth. After doing this board, it was unanimous decision that we have a female by the name of Melissa. Yes, sir. And, uh, after going through this process, um, we was, the sheriff wanted to see how everything else went. We showed him what happened. After going back to the sheriff, he saw the scale, and he wanted to know, as I come before you tonight, to have raised the classifications to two pay grades.
Those pay grade down.
Uh, the pay grade now is a grade six.
That would be the, my conversation with you. That we do have two others that, two others that have classifications?
Yeah, to clarify what this is, um, there are department level finance officer positions. Currently, we have one in social services, one at the health department. Those are large departments. Uh, Ms. uh, Ms. Powell, Ms. Linda Powell, was serving pretty much a similar role, just not with that title. And so, uh, the idea was that this new position be classified as a department level position, which is at, is at a grade six. The maximum pay currently for that position is 63,000, 63,800. Our policy does not allow us to pay someone outside of a given range.
That's your final vote.
So what we had to do about that?
Do that, to change your classification.
Okay.
Of that particular pay classification. And my motion would be to change all the trees. Not just sheriff's person, to change the classification, to raise the classification of that pay grade to a better pay grade.
My second. Um, to clarify, how many pay grades are we?
Whatever, how many you have in the, in our table.
To go from grade six to grade eight?
Always, in that particular, that, whatever, that, that's iron age. That's your time, that's.
Currently it's a grade six. Sounds like the request is to increase it two grades to a grade eight.
To, to grade eight, and that would be the other positions that you said they had three.
They're all at a grade six.
Ask, we change, my request to change all the, my motion to change all the.
Mr. Chairman, could I, if I could, not certainly your motion, but just to clean up, if you're gonna make that move, to clean up that stuff. Right now, as I mentioned, we currently, if you, if you had a copy, I'm looking at it now. At a grade six, what's, what we have here is a social services finance officer. We have a health department finance officer. We're essentially using that grade for this position. If you're gonna make a change, I would recommend that you, that we change that to a department level finance officer, and it be one position that be used in the departments. Um, so that will be a change, and I would ask you to consider wanting to make this change.
Sir, but it would still only be those three positions currently?
That is my question.
Yeah. My second to that motion.
Question?
Do we have money for this? It's going to be in money pockets.
Well, you know, we, we have, uh, the salary budget for each of these departments, and we'd have to look to see what's available to make, to make these moves. I mean, you can't, they can't exceed those, those salary limits unless salary budgets, unless we make a budget. So this, using some of these funds could affect the ability to fill those.
Make a comment on this, on that? The sheriff has salary budget on their own. And in conversation with him, he has expressed that there is salary within his, but he was restricted by the grade and what he get offered. So within his budget, he can reallocate funds in his salary line items already budgeted to the sheriff's office to, to accommodate that, I think, correct?
He has a salary line that has a certain amount in it.
And in my conversation, he said that there is enough room in that to, to get the pay that this person would require to cover. So it wouldn't necessarily be any more funding from the sheriff's office, any more funding to the sheriff's office to salary line item fund.
And finances, so we don't want to play, man. We're in a good spot. Linda's helped us get off the list. Stay off that financial phase. Sheriff's Department has a lot of stuff to run up. Jail, and everything else. And now we're out in shelter. We need to make sure we have somebody in place, that knows what they're doing with finances. And Linda's gonna help with it. She gonna try and make sure they do what they should. It's important enough, I think.
Now, that's a question. And all in favor, let me know by the votes, high.
High.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Appointments, you have before you, uh, the appointments. General hold, and all throughout the extension, Sean Howard. All my word. Ms. Powell, at large rep. Or the difference at large rep. British Knight at large rep. Is that motion to approve these appointments, or?
Second.
Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes, high.
High.
All opposed? Here it now, we all. I thought this time, this is for review, uh, anything we want, I'll touch on this.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer any questions if you have.
Is there a motion to approve? Second. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, high. All opposed? Here it now. Contract for new, uh, approval of services, and then we talk to the board.
Uh, I do, I would ask if you consider adding one contract. You have two contract amendments before you. Would ask if you would consider adding a contract for exhibits. Um, this is a contract for equipment and furniture replacement at the sheriff's 911 call center. Uh, this will be paid for by E911 funds that we received from the state. Uh, you see the total amount of the contract is 131,880.85. Uh, this did go through proper bidding or procurement process. Uh, so I ask if you consider adding that. The other two, private health services amendment number three, this would be increasing the not to exceed limit. Uh, currently there is, uh, funds budgeted, uh, for that. Kimball's food by design is to extend the existing contract for an additional four years. Uh, this is a service that's provided at detention center. Uh, it's not a cost-based contract, but it is a revenue generating contract where a percentage of the fee collected by the service for the inmates, uh, comes to the county. So this amendment would extend that contract under existing terms to, for another four years. I recommend that you approve those two amendments and that one contract.
Motion? Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes, high. All opposed? And now that's approved. Uh, uh, down to the board, any questions on the board, still, I think? If you're over here for my financial officer.
Yes, sir, I'd like to call it Ms. Barfield, if you are one of the financials.
Good evening. So tonight I thought I'd take a little bit more time than usual, but I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible. Just kind of wanted to go back over, thought it was important, given the state of things, uh, to just go back over the report, make sure that as you're looking at the number, you know what the numbers are representing. Which is kind of, you know, hard to do if you're just sitting there looking at the report. So in terms, we'll start with the revenues. In terms of tax collection, what you're looking at, the 21% collected is representing about two months of activity. So we expect the bulk of the property tax revenue, uh, to come in between November and January. So I think at the 21%, we're pretty much where we would expect to be with two months' worth of activity. Sales tax, that's one of my next biggest item. Uh, what you're seeing here is actually the very first month that we have reported sales tax for this fiscal year. It represents July sales. So as you can see, with, uh, only one month, then one month's worth of activity, we'll have to wait and see over the next few months, um, how all the over economic conditions are gonna play out. You know, including the federal shutdown, we'll have to wait to see how that will affect consumer spending. But as for now, it looks like, you know, I would say right off the gate, we probably started off strong in terms of the actual amount of the collection. Didn't want to remind you that, um, our sales taxes broken up into articles. I know Mr. Evans has talked with you about that before, and I've heard the board speak about it, but just to remind you, um, articles 40, 42, and 45 are statewide pool taxes. So that means if North Carolina economy is, uh, doing well, we do well, get a better share. And likewise, if it's slow, um, we see a lot lower, um, allocation. Articles 39 and 46 will depend on Edchcombe's own sales. So if those go down, that's just a representation of our local consumer activity. So just as wanted to remind you that of those articles, some are statewide, and give us an indication of how we do there, um, statewide, and some just represent how we're doing locally. Just something for you to think about as, um, you're looking at sales tax, and remembering that they're coming from several different places. And now most of the statewide pool taxes, we do share with municipalities. Um, so just give you that little bit of information. Last one I reported, and I'm sure you've heard about the 3% reduction in medicated reimbursement. I did take a look at EMS revenues, which you will see in the category here on your sales service and B. They are, um, tracking close to their budget right now. You know, it just went into effect October 1st. So we'll continue to monitor to see what that 3%, 3% reduction will do in terms of our EMS revenues. Skip it down to the health revenues. It's based on reimbursement through September expenditures. That means we've been reimbursed for about three months. The county is trending, um, to pay about one-third locally, which is our budgeted share. I'd say now they might be a little behind pace, but not in a way that suggests that there's any type of problem. As with EMS revenues, we'll continue to monitor the impact, um, of that 3% production on our local budgeted share, since that reduced state reimbursement, um, will likely cause an increase in our local share. What you're seeing with the DSS and the 5% collection, uh, really just represents July reimbursements, and it's really just one month. Uh, their expenditures are close to last year, um, at this point, so their spending seems pretty flat, um, compared to this time last year. And so far, um, we're on track for the county's budgeted share to remain around 37%. Which it was, uh, around at budget time when we completed the ordinance. In terms of spending across the county, departments have spent roughly one quarter of their budget with public safety, uh, being, trending a little bit higher. Um, I'd still say for now, that's pretty consistent for four months of, of activity. Uh, but that's all I have for the general funds. On the solid waste fund, this report reflects about three months of, uh, revenues, and about four months of expenses. As you know, they're on a separate system than we are, so, um, the reporting is about a month behind. Uh, the fee collections are running slightly behind what's needed for the program to fully cover its own costs. Nothing that we've not seen in prior years, and, um, we are also have a county budgeted share, um, in case those, uh, expenses have overrun compared to the revenues that are in. But for now, I'd still call the solid way, for now, I'd still say all of that was within budget. The water report, the water store report shows about three months of billing and four months of expenses. Yeah, I'm sorry, expenses, which is normal for how that fund runs. Revenues and spending look consistent with normal operations at this point, and the funds appear to be covered and it's caused without any issues. So for now, that's what I have in terms of the report. I'll be happy to take any questions, and then if it's okay, I'd like to give you an audit update.
Any questions?
So, um, got some news on the audit front. Uh, did talk with the auditors today. They do expect to provide us a draft, um, of the financial statements later this week. They have indicated that they will go here and present the financial statements. Once they send it to us, we have to review it. We have to concur that the information is correct. Once we get all that done, then we can, uh, get with Mr. Evans and talk about if they don't present to the, the auditors could come and present. However, there is a, uh, another situation that's brewing. I'm not sure if you've heard about it, but due to the federal government shutdown, the Office of Management and Budget, OMB, has not yet released the final audit guidance for the federal funds. We're not sure they will until the shutdown is lifted. This does affect, um, really all counties, large cities, and any municipality receiving the 750,001 federal funds. This is ma- mainly due to compliance. This guidance is issued, federal guidance, um, for auditing federal funds. Now, what the auditors have shared with me is that they have performed some compliance testing, um, over at DSS and help, um, using the draft guidance, but they cannot finalize the federal compliance portion until OMB guidance is officially issued. Um, so what that means is they could come and present the financial reports, because they don't think any numbers will significantly change, um, with the OMB guidance and, and the compliance be. Um, but as far as hitting that button and saying that we've sent it after that presentation, it may take a few weeks. Uh, but the situation really is out of our hands locally. There's not a lot we can do. But albeit, albeit for that, we would be in a position to, uh, submit the audit in November, um, given that they could make that presentation to you before then. Um, but at the latest, after your December meeting, um, but we, you know, we have the December 31st, so we would still be ahead of time.
But that's a statewide issue?
Yes, sir. As, as I understand it, that's a statewide issue.
Nationwide.
Uh, yeah, I guess nationwide, thanks, Mr. Evans. Um, but I'm, but with my understanding, the LGC is aware of it, and, um, there's not a whole lot we can do, but wait and see. But we do intend to ask the auditor to speak to you about the financial condition of the county, and give you their role in work. Um, and hopefully soon.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could note, um, also, I guess for the public this year, you know, all that we do here in county government, we strive for transparency. And I want the public to understand how important it is, this monthly report is that we present. It's not presented just to the board, it's presented for the public. You know, this, this summary report, report could be just emailed to you or given to you all, but it's presented in this public form so that our citizens can see where we are, that we check in on our budget on a very regular basis, uh, and that's important. It seems like a simple report, it's, it's only a couple of pages or so. There are a whole lot of numbers behind all of this to get it to this point. It's a whole big financial engine, without even thousands of budget lines behind all of this. But this summary, summarized report is important for us as staff, for you as the board, for our citizens, to know that we are checking in, that we are monitoring the gauges, and we're seeing where our trends might be off, and if there's anything that raises a red flag. As you hear month after month, Ms. Barfield has a wonderful topic saying, you know, we are here at this point, but this is generally where we are. This is where we would expect to be, or there's a reason why the percentage is at this point, at this time of the year. All of those indicators are tremendously important for us, and it's important for our citizens to be aware of this. Uh, these reports are posted on our website after they're presented. Also, you can go to our website, you can see all of our audits, financial statements with those audits. Um, you can see our budgets, our budget ordinances for a number of years, uh, that goes back. All of that is posted on our website. If you go to our homepage, scroll down a little over halfway, there's a button that says financial report, so you can see all of these things. I just wanted to highlight the importance of us sharing this information publicly for our citizens.
I think it's good. Or it's like, for some of the things that we probably had locked up in the past. And it gives accountability to the staff, and it serves to say that we are doing our work side. So I think it does, it's got a lot of good purposes to it, so I think it, and, and, and it, and it's, to me, it's understandable. I could follow it, which is more important, and I could follow what you're saying. Any other comments? Move it on. Uh, you got your solid race for the board, any questions from the board? Here now, you move it on to the master board.
Uh, you have on my report, my monthly major events and updates, workforce development indicators, um, for the month, the tourism development authorities, a monthly financial report. Um, I want to give you an update on the impact of the federal shutdown. Ms. Barfield mentioned some of the impact we're feeling from that. Uh, I want to mention, I'm sure all of you have heard about this, seen it in the news, read about. One of the biggest impacts of this is on the USDA SNAP program or Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Um, it was initially, uh, uh, published a couple of weeks ago that, um, benefits did go out in October, but they would not go out in November. Um, because of the shutdown, the latest update, uh, and I saw it as you all probably have, uh, we've not gotten any guidance that I'm aware of, but it was, uh, announced from the White House that a partial disbursement for November will go out. We don't know yet exactly what that means and when that will happen. But just wanted to have, everyone to have some idea of the scope of the impact, uh, on this for us. Uh, in North Carolina, there are 1.4 million people, uh, that receive assistance from this program, 600,000 of which are children. In Edchcombe County, we have just under 15,000, um, people in Edchcombe County, uh, who rely on assistance from this program. The average, uh, benefit is, is around $184. Um, totally for the county, it's right at $2 million that comes into the, into our local economy, uh, through that program. Um, so it, we'll have to see exactly what the disbursements will be for, um, for individ- excuse me, individuals on that program for the month of November, and certainly if the shutdown continues for an extended period of time, that the impact would be felt even wider and deeper. The representatives from North Carolina Department of Human Services, um, indicated on a call that I participated in last week, um, our county managers across the state. Um, they're looking as to whether or not the state will be able to help counties with the federal share of the administration of the SNAP program. Uh, as you probably know, right now, the cost for us to administer the program, 50% is covered by the federal government. Uh, as you probably know, right now, the cost for us to administer the program, fifty percent is covered by the federal government. Um, that is, uh, uh, reported, requested on a monthly basis, and that funding is sent back to the county on a monthly basis, to counties on a monthly basis. Uh, right now, as far as we know with the government shut, as long as it's shut down, we won't get that reimbursement. So North Carolina Department of Health and Human Service, they are exploring the possibility of them, the state reimbursing counties for that cost. And then they get reimbursed from the federal government, but we've not got any final, um, word on that. Again, the longer this lasts, the more this not only causes issues for our citizens, but it causes issues for us from a, a cash flow perspective. Uh, the WIC program, the Women and Infant Children program, uh, what we know, uh, as of now is that funding is available to maintain uh, those benefits through mid-November. We are on standby to see if more federal funding will be received. Um, the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, right now, the state has indicated they have enough money available to provide that, uh, assistance uh, for only the priority applicants, and that being elderly and disabled, and likely those who've received assistance before. Again, that could open up wider once, um, the, the federal shutdown, uh, ends. Uh, Ms. Beth and I and Ms. Ballas, some of her team who are here tonight, we met with, uh, a, a partner, community partner, just on last week, just to hear what, uh, there are a number of organizations in the county that distribute food. They partner with the North Carolina Food Bank and other organizations to distribute food. They do that already, it's a need, but, uh, it's a need that they're meeting already. They're talking about how can they, uh, expand those services. Uh, Governor Stein did announce that an additional eighteen million dollars in contributions will be going to those food banks. And we're just seeing from the county's perspective and what we, we might be able to support that, whether it be, um, we make people aware of these services, or we can help them with identifying volunteers or what have. So, uh, I, again, uh, you know, still, uh, it's tremendous impact that goes without saying. Um, hopefully all of this, uh, will be done and wrapped up soon. Happy to answer any questions about that. I have a couple of items under my report, but we're, we're to pause that, of course. Uh, I do want to say and thank you for those who were able to come to our community meeting in Rocky Mountain, uh, last week. We call it our county and your community. And we had good participation, want to thank our department heads and other staff members, uh, that joined us that night. Our goal was to, uh, present to our community, to give an update from the county's perspective, to remind our community, uh, the services that we provide and the reason that we exist as a, as a county. We gave some updates, want to thank Dr. Andy Bryan, our superintendent, and Dr. Greg McLeod, President of Community College, who joined us as well and, uh, and gave updates. Uh, and certainly we look forward for an opportunity to be able to do that in other areas of the county, if, uh, if the board would like to. Final thing would be, I was asked at the last meeting about, um, our lobbyists. I will provide you a more detailed update, uh, from the lobbyists, um, but from what I received of, uh, just want to give you a few items. First of all, I want to make sure that we're all aware, initially, we, uh, had the, our, our lobbyist is Moore Van Allen. It's a law firm that they have a lobbying arm like many law firms do. We went through a request for proposal process last year and selected them. Our primary contact is the, uh, attorney, uh, Ms. Beth Friedrich with Moore Van Allen. We worked closely with her over that period of time. The initial contract was for six months, extended that for another six months, that contract ended in May. Um, and so we're considering now if we will continue to need that service, and if so, we will likely bring a contract back to you. Um, but initially, uh, some of the primary work that the, the lobbyists did for us, they were instrumental in getting the, uh, state statute language change approved for the mega site fund. You'll recall there was a, uh, you know, uh, an amendment that needed to be made for the program to be implemented as it was intended. Uh, she was very instrumental in, uh, in getting that through the maze of approvals and on the right people's desk, and that was, that was approved. Um, um, she was able to keep, um, uh, she and her counterparts are able to keep key projects before the leadership in the General Assembly that were, that are important to the county, particularly at Kingsborough. For example, our training center that we've been talking about possibly building there on site, as well as a fire station there. Of course, we've not received funding for either of those, but, and we, there's been some leadership change there at the General Assembly over the last several months. Uh, but, um, our lobbyist was able to keep that in front of them. Uh, when Natron, before Natron closed down their project, um, idea here in the county, uh, our lobbyist was instrumental in working with us in drafting the application for the Goldenly Foundation. We were pursuing their economic catalyst funding, um, to, uh, assist with some aspects of that project. And so that application still, uh, we had that available and ready if there's another project we want to substitute for Natron. Uh, she's also kept us updated on a number of other legislative changes, um, and certainly made our position known among the leadership there in the General Assembly. So just want to give you that brief update. I'll give you a more formal written report, uh, from the lobbying firm. We'll have, continue to have some conversation about whether or not we feel, uh, continuing that service will be necessary in need of for the county. So that's it for my report, happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, with mine.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Just one comment, um. I, in watching other counties and municipalities, they have a report that comes from, you know, the Police Department, the Sheriff Department, monthly, about the activity that's gone on within that department and kind of some stats and, and talking points. Um, I talked with the sheriff last week and asked if he could possibly include that in our agenda packet. If not, in our agenda packet, and just in an email to the commissioner so that we can kind of see what those numbers are, and the amount of work that they're doing and, and how that looks. Um, in particular, Bob, our, our partnership had received some questions about that through, through some third party media sources, and it was quickly handled in the reports that they actually worked that, hey, this isn't actually accurate. And so I think if we can get some more transparency in what those numbers are, I think it's always good. So if you see an email coming, coming from that, um, he said he could provide it every single day that you wanted it. Um, so, uh, I said monthly would probably be fine. So just wanted to share that with everybody.
Okay.
Sheriff Wiggins, I just got one thing, I'll be pretty quick here. Uh, I think Edco County has a, a lot of things to offer that sometimes just aren't out there in the public's view. And, uh, what I'm going to mention is, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go pick up my little granddaughter Avery. And, uh, Dino Ellis is, President of Dino Ellis, from over here, his, his little granddaughter from Jim Nast's over right now. I was just making a little routine conversation, and I said, what y'all learn in school today? And I, you know what I was expecting? Uh, a little laugh. And they just hit me up with the Bill of Rights and the Constitution. I mean, I'm, I'm in awe. And so I immediately thought about, uh, our charters of freedom. And, and I, you know, y'all may say I'm wrong, and this may be happening, but, uh, I, I plugged in Google today, charters of freedom. We, we don't even come up on Google. Now, if you go to the website of the ones that have established it, I think it's forty-five counties and, uh, or municipalities that have charters of freedom. Uh, in my opinion, we need to do something to advertise that, to get that word out there. There, there needs to be an activity bus rolling in here from Martin County, from Pitt County, from Edco County, every week to look at what we got down from that courthouse. And you got something that, uh, yeah, Nash County has it, Halifax County has it, we have it. You, you go around pretty much, and, you know, the other counties I mentioned do not have it. I, I just think, uh, I don't know how to do it, but I think if our schools, you know, I'm not necessarily saying second graders. I'm saying junior high, seventh and eighth graders, that will be a great field trip. It wouldn't take an hour and a half, they go back to school, and don't, not have to go to Washington to come out here to fall there and see them. However, we can get it out. I think we need to do that, we'll work on it, and we do. Thank you for your suggestion.
Oh, I wonder, I just attended, uh, juvenile justice conference in Greensboro, Federal State Center. A lot of things going on, trying to keep our young people on straight and narrow. I was very glad to see, um, representatives from here, um, children of our boys and girls club that was there, and from our juvenile court, um, that was there. There was a lot of information, good information. At least from the server on the board, I need to know what they actually do and how I can help and give it in. Very, very.
Any other questions? Questions?
Just then, I spoke on the phone the other day about looking at our insurance, getting ready to have some house done, I was done fast because, uh, once we get that, I told them I didn't think what happened to that person.
Okay.
We'll find out if they need a bad.
No, that's one question. Spins, Mr. Evans. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, sorry, this is going into the second session. There's a number of practices. Uh, discussing act, act number, uh, N C, no kind of general stress, one, four, three, that's three eighteen, that's eleven, eighty-four. Is that motion to approve? That, question. All in favor of that, nobody goes outside. All opposed? If you know, say, you made it, you don't have to put your surrender. You're right, right. Good, yourself, sir? Doing well, thank you.